Calling the meeting to order. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act notice, notice of this meeting has been given by the Board Secretary in the following manner: Posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the Voorhees Township Public Schools Administrative Building on July 26, 2021 and August 24, 2021. Sending written notice to the Courier Post on July 26, 2021 and August 24, 2021. Filing written notice with the Clerk of Voorhees Township on July 26, 2021 and August 24, 2021. Posting on the Voorhees Township website on July 26, 2021 and August 24, 2021. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the beloved, gracious hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just.
The Board Secretary call roll.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
Mrs. Cosenza?
Here.
Dr. Falk?
Here.
Ms. Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Levy?
Here.
Mr. Schmuss?
Here.
Mrs. Wallace?
Here.
Mrs. Van Aken?
Here.
Mrs. Watson?
Here.
So I want to welcome everyone here today. Today we have a very special part of the meeting. We are recognizing three fantastic educators for their 25-year service award. So thanks, everybody, for coming out, and I will start with Regina Borjean. Regina began her career in the Voorhees School District as a substitute teacher at Voorhees Middle School before becoming an instructional associate at VMS and then Crescent. She was the PTA president at Signal Hill School for, and for 17 years, she co-chaired the Sunshine Club at VMS. Regina and her family volunteered for several years at the Voorhees Soccer Association, including managing the field snack bar. She has been married for 43 years to her husband Jerry, and they have two grown children, Kristen and Kyle. In the last year, she has been blessed with two grandchildren, Nicholas and Brooke. Congratulations, Regina Borjean. Where would you like us? Next is Tim Hassel, 8th grade Language Arts at VMS. Tim was hired in August of 1996 for a two-month maternity leave. So the fact that he is still here 25 years later, I think, speaks volumes. Besides being an amazing teacher at VMS, he has written four academic books in education, three 8th grade English books, and of course, SAT Express. He has taught SAT prep for 16 years now. Tim has been both an Annenberg Scholar and a National Endowment for the Humanity Scholar at the National Constitution Center and at Independence Hall. Tim would like to thank the district for supporting its teachers and making it a place to be happy and proud to work. Tim, congratulations on your 25 years of service. Last but definitely not least, Jill Locke, Secretary at Osage School. Jill has been the Secretary at Osage for the past 25 years. Besides the numerous behind-the-scenes tasks that keep the school running, Jill served as the Osage Yearbook Editor for 15 years. In addition, she co-chaired numerous OPFA fundraisers such as the Designer Bag Bingo, Casino Night, and Monte Carlo Night. Jill is most proud of her five grandchildren. Thank you so much for your service, Jill. I think having three individuals win, be awarded the 25 years of service is a testament to how strong our district is and how wonderful our educators are. So thank you again for 25 years. Okay. Next up, we're going to approve the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September 29, 2021 meeting as shown in the attachments for regular meeting and executive session?
Next again?
Sorry, just one second. And now we're going to take the vote on those minutes. People can log in and cast your vote. I'm opening it right now.
Are you voting separately for both?
Yeah, that's, since you hold it out that way, we'll do it separately.
Okay.
That's a little bit tricky because sometimes people need to stay in or vote.
Exactly.
We have, the first item is voting on all the categories, and in some cases, that will be, okay, so if somebody wants to, if I open it up to the first one and somebody wants to vote on something else, maybe they could just let me know to open it up individually.
Perfect.
For now, I guess that's how we'll do it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6? Oh, I'm sorry, are we not finished?
Mr. Bryce?
Yeah.
I don't have Mr. Bryce's vote yet. It didn't pop up? Oh. Could we get your help?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you click the button to start the meeting?
Okay, I have eight yeses and one abstention. So we'll close the online voting and save it. Okay, now we can go to the next one.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 6, 2021 meeting, special meeting and executive session?
I'm sorry, who was the one that said first? Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, sometimes it's hard to tell. And the second?
It's Jason.
Jason, all right. I'm opening the online voting. I have seven yeses and two abstentions. The abstentions are Dr. Levy and Mrs. Wallace. I forgot to mention last time, the abstention was Mrs. Wallace.
We have several information items. Fire drills and safety drills have been conducted for October 2021. You can see the list, you can see the list on the attachment for the meeting, the HIB report, and we have enrollment data as of October 15, 2021. There are no items under Communications Board Secretary Report.
Okay. The Board Secretary Report is kind of short today. It's just a reminder that November 2 is Election Day. We are hosting election in this office, in this room also. We are not really part of the whole process, but the County Board of Elections is, so you can always check there to see as the votes come in. They tally them and post some information. The second item in my report is the budget calendar, so we always start preparing for the next year's budget, the 2022-23 budget around October. And so this calendar lays out the process that we deal with every single month. It concludes in May, but it does take a lot of months to put it together. So that's just for your review.
Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to ask Sue Donnelly to come up and give us a brief overview of our annual student safety report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be recording to the floor on our State Department of Education's student data and safety system for the 2021, 2020, 2021 school year. So this is the data that's based upon the criteria that we're looking for state to be during. During the recording period of September 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021, the district reported eight incidents through the SSDF system. Of those eight incidents, one incident involved trespassing after school hours, one involved aggressive behavior, and one involved physical contact. The other five incidents, three were of burn cases of harassment, intimidation, bullying, and two were less than one. We also report at this time, the second reporting period, January 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2021, for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. This gets reported two times a year, and again, we had three of burn cases. Typically, these times of year, we record on something called the Self-Assessment Data that goes along with the Anti-Legally Bullied Rights Act. However, the state is behind with that, so normally, we complete it in the summer, but they just issued it in the fall, so we'll complete it. Let's do it then. Thank you.
As part of this section, we have to have, as a public hearing, so we need to open it up for public comment just on the topics that Sue was talking about. It's a public hearing on the 2020-2021 Annual Report on Student Safety Data System.
Open for public comments?
On this particular topic.
If anyone wishes to address the Board on this particular topic, please approach the podium and write your name and address on the login sheet. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. While the Board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on matters involving personnel litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, the Board will now hear comments from the public relating to this agenda item for this board meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board will not take action this evening. You will be notified at some time later by letter, electronic mail, telephone, or in the context of a later board meeting of any action the Board does take. No comments. Thank you so much.
We also have to open it for board comments if there's any comments from the Board on this topic.
Any board comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of informational items I'd like to go through. I would like to recognize Dr. Howard Margolis for donating a number of books to our staff on professional development, and his continued support of our schools is deeply appreciated. I'd like to thank all of our families who participated in our first annual family night. I received several emails from parents and some pictures. It was game, some of them were called a game board night. Some had outdoor movies. Picnic dinners were just a few of the activities. I'd also like to thank VBA Voorhees Basketball Association for buying into this activity and their willingness to cooperate with us and follow the family night, the third Wednesday of every month. I'd like to thank, a special thank you to our PFA members who have worked extremely hard to provide some fall outdoor activities. I had the opportunity to go to Osage's, what is it, trunk or treat last weekend. The vehicles were amazing. The parents did an absolutely wonderful job, so I'd just like to thank the PFOs and the parents for coming out last weekend. It was, it was amazing. They did a great job. The construction project at Crescent School continues to move along. All concrete footings have been poured, and the cinder block walls will soon follow. All students in Grade 4th grade have completed the New Jersey Start Strong Assessment. We're currently going through that data to assess the students' needs. Dr. Young is currently preparing and uploading information for New Jersey CUSAC. New Jersey CUSAC, it's a New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. It's what the state of New Jersey uses to kind of grade the schools, monitor public schools. They review operations, personnel, finance, and curriculum to ensure that we are following the proper procedures and guidelines. It also includes a physical inspection of our schools, and at the conclusion of the inspection and review, the Board will be, get presented with a report. We're pleased to announce the pending approval of a COVID vaccine for students. We have partnered with Adler's Pharmacy once again. We have a tentative schedule to offer vaccinations to eligible students wishing to participate. We anticipate sending additional information out next week. We have quite an aggressive plan, but if it works and everything works out the way we hope, the students who are eligible, parents who wish to participate in vaccinating their child five and up, would be fully vaccinated by winter break. This afternoon, I attended the VMS Girls Field Hockey Championship Game. Although they lost 2 to 1 in overtime, the girls fought hard. They did an amazing job. I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Rosetti and Ms. Parks and the girls for all their hard work this season. We also wish the boys soccer team best of luck tomorrow as they play in their championship game. And finally, last month, I asked all the schools to come up a scarecrow, to do a scarecrow competition, and the scarecrows are sitting behind me. As usual, the staff did an amazing job. I am embarrassed to say there was some trash talking between schools. At the end of tonight's meeting, the Board is going to be voting for their favorite scarecrow, and then we'll post the results up to our website and to our Facebook page. Now, I was told this afternoon by our technology director that I have to do my best impression of Dana White to walk along so that the people at home can see the scarecrows, so I'll need to just walk along the microphone so the camera picks me up and follows me. So here goes. So over here, our first three scarecrows here are middle school, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. And as we move down, this is kind of my favorite, right here in the middle. Number four, this is done by the administration building, and they work hard. And then number-
I don't have a favorite.
And then we have right here, number five is Crescent Strong, their Cougar. Number six here is, the pack is stronger together from Signal Hill. Then we have number seven here, which is Hamilton. And our last one, right behind Mr. Schmuss here, number eight is Osage Start Strong. We know what that face, there's two, there's two Mr. Pravers in the room. So I just want to thank the staff. We had some fun with it. It was a good fun activity, and they really came through. That's all I have, Madam President.
Committee of Reports. Ms. Galliano, can you do the policy committee update, please?
Sure. Earlier evening, and review to policies that are updates from existing policies that we already have in place.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schmuss, can you provide an update on the Personnel Committee?
Certainly. The Personnel Committee met October 6 to review and revise salary guides for the food services and custodial, both salary guides, which will be presented tonight to vote upon. We took some time to look at those and revise those to benefit both of those units that we voted on tonight.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And Dr. Falk, could you also provide a Personnel Committee update?
Yeah. So I'd like to thank Mr. Reverend and Ms. Alley for their hard work in reorganizing the business office. So, so this effort, it's actually going to save the district a total of $95,000, I think, over the next fiscal year. So, so the first stage of this is that they're hiring a new transportation coordinator, and then they're transferring a portion of the purchasing and procurement responsibilities to an in-house staff member who recently got certified as a purchasing agent. And then the second stage of this, which is going to start in July 2022, is that the accounts payable and purchasing staff member is going to be retiring, who's currently doing that, is retiring June 30th. And then the purchasing and procurement function will be fully transferred to in-house staff member. They would have a joint title that assumes both responsibilities, and they would get a stipend for that, but we're saving the salary of the person who is retiring. So the business office clerk and the accounts payable positions are now going to be converted to one position.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone, audience participation, anyone wishing to address the Board, please approach the podium and write your name and address on the login sheet. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. While the Board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on matters involving personnel, litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, the Board will now hear comments from the public relating to the items on the agenda for this board meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board will not take action this evening. You will be notified at some later time by letter, electronic mail, telephone, or in the context of a later board meeting of any action the Board does take.
Actually going to wait because I just heard you say the end of the voting, so I'm going to wait for the public comment.
Okay.
I just asked anyone at the podium to speak up.
I'm sorry?
I just asked anyone at the podium to speak up.
Okay.
It's hard to hear remotely.
The public, the next section will be later on in the agenda. Okay, perfect. Any board comments? Moving on to transportation. Can I get a motion to, can I get a motion to approve the items under transportation?
I'll move that.
Second.
I'm opening the online voting. All motions are approved, so I'm going to close the voting. So it's a yes unanimously. Thank you.
Can I have an motion to approve all of the items under policy?
Can I make a comment before we go move that?
Yes.
Unfortunately, somehow, we, some of us did not get notice of the policy meeting until a few hours before the policy meeting today. So I just asked that we get these meetings timely, although we did get the policies, obviously, to read ahead of time. I just wanted to make note that we didn't get notice of meeting until a few hours before.
Any other comments?
In this section, do you want to vote individually or the whole thing?
So I'm asking if we can, for policies for second reading, if we can vote individually?
So what we can do is we can make the motion on 13.2 and 13.3.
Okay. Okay. Or can I get a motion to approve the items under 13.2?
Second.
I'm opening the online voting. The voting is yes unanimously, so I will close the voting on that one.
Can I get a motion to approve the items under 13.3?
Is there a way to separate those because there's several policies under the second reading?
I think, Helen, can you just make a notation?
I think so.
Okay.
I guess, if you want, I mean, right now, the voting would have, you could write yes or no, and I will say, does anybody want to clarify? We can put it in the notes, open up. I think there's a, there's a summary in contents, summary in contents section, we'll just adjust it there. That's okay. All right, so let's give this a try. Okay, so you can do the motion.
So if I object to one, I have to vote no for all?
I have to see how it looks when I go in there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just not sure. This is still kind of new, so I think we'll just give it a try. I all know that you want to clarify. How's that? Is that good? Okay. All right, so I guess if somebody could do a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay.
Do you want me to open it for comments so that Dawn can clarify now?
Sure. Okay, that's good.
Do I have any board comments related to 13.3?
My, the only thing I want to clarify is I do have an issue with 2422. I think for K through 8, some of this is, should be dealt with parents and doctors and psychiatrists and not the school. Some of it I also do not think pertains to health and physical education. That's the only issue I have.
Any other board comments?
Yes. I have a question. What I did is I went into the summary and contents, and I just wrote the 2422 in there. I don't know if you have access to that, but I put it in there. There's, I have three tabs, summary and contents or comments. Do you have three or no?
No. When I click on it, I can just see the-
If you click it into the right-hand corner, should be able to type notes on that.
Yeah, I can only see those notes.
Okay, that's true. Okay, we'll do the online voting. I did make note of it, and if you-
So, but my question is-
How should she vote?
I don't want to vote no for the whole thing.
At this point, I'm just going to say vote no with clarification. You know, like, like when I call the roll, I'll say you voted no.
But you know the-
And then, then I'll ask you to specify, and I'll write it in the notes. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm opening the online voting. Okay, right now, I have eight yeses, one no. I'm going to close the voting, and I'm going to go back over to the summary and comments. And I would like to ask Mrs. Wallace, which item, are you, which items are you voting no on, and which items, yes, either way, whichever one makes sense.
I'm only voting no on policy 2422.
And that's item 13.3A.
Correct.
Okay.
12.3A.
No.
No, I'm sorry.
13 points. Policies for second reading?
I apologize. 13.3A is correct.
Okay. So 13.3A, you're voting no. All others, yes. Others in this section, section, yes.
Okay. That's good.
Thank you. Thank you. No, that's okay. We're refining this as we go. New situations all the time. All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to personnel. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under personnel, or would anybody like them separated out?
Okay, I'm opening the online voting. Motion approved unanimously. I'm closing online voting.
There are no items under deferred action. Sorry.
I'm sorry, something, something just went wrong here. Is it flashing on, I'm sorry, is it flashing on everyone's screen? Because when I clicked it, everything-
It came back up.
Can you guys vote again on that one, please? I'm sorry. Yeah, on the personnel, it's, it was just blank. When I went to, when I went to close it, it just blanked everything out.
Click on change vote and click on it again. We apologize, we're still obviously working through-
Yeah. This is our third meeting, I think, using this, maybe. Okay. Okay, it's unanimous, yes. I'm closing it, saving it. All right, thank you.
No problem. There are no items under deferred action. New business. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under new business? If anybody would like to separate them out, please let me know.
Online voting is open. The motions are unanimously approved. Closing it and saving. Thank you.
We will be holding a special meeting on November 15th, 2021, 7:00 PM at the Admin Building. It will be for the HYA to present their leadership profile report and the desired characteristics report related to the superintendent search. Our next regular scheduled meeting will be on November 29th, 2021, at 7:30 PM at the Audience participation on any topic. Anyone wishing to address the Board, please approach the podium and write your name and address on the login sheet. If you are attending via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature to be acknowledged. While the Board is limited in its ability to respond to the public on matters involving personnel, litigation, negotiations, and attorney-client privilege, the Board will now hear comments from the public. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board will not take action this evening. You will be notified at some later time by letter, electronic mail, telephone, or in the context of a later Board meeting of any action the Board does take. I am going to use the timer function, so hopefully this won't be difficult, so please hold until I. You can, you can provide your name and address before you start.
Michelle Nocito, 38 Simsbury Drive.
Timer.
Okay. Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the entire VMS team on a successful start to the school year. I have a sixth grader there now, and I am truly impressed with how the VMS team has worked to transition our children back into the classroom, including Mrs. Kaufman, who I know ran around like crazy for some of us to make sure we had working iPads. So thank you, VMS. I also wanted to address the entire Board and members of the community that are present regarding their, the Board's role and their reactions to what life has offered us over the last 20-plus months. I was reflecting recently on the elected members of our Board and how the Board dynamics have changed and what we have allowed this pandemic to do to our community. It seems we have reached a point where the world has come between us. Some of us used to be very close friends, and some of us sat together at the Voorhees Swim Club and collaborated on ways that we could advocate together for full-day kindergarten in our town. And after attending Board meetings for years together, we worked to elect members of our community, new members, to represent the Board. There was a lot of collective energy and joy in our community, and there was a lot of support for our teachers while we did this. We never approached elections for the School Board by trying to disparage or attack the integrity of any sitting Board member that had an opinion that was different than ours. Sadly, it seems that environment has changed, and I am asking the community to not let this divide us. Arguing with friends and neighbors over mandates that the state requires our Board to implement and shouting from the social media rooftops that we're going to not vote for this one or not vote for that one because they voted against the reopening plan, which is not true. They voted if they thought the plan was appropriate for our children and our staff. No member of this School Board voted that they did not want your children in school. That is inaccurate, and that is false. They wanted our children and our staff safe. So to look back on the meetings over the last year and know that this Board has not voted the same way on every single matter tells us that we have a diverse Board. To look at this Board and know that most of them, except for the few members that were elected last year, voted to give your former superintendent an increase after only being here for 12 months, and then later voted collectively that he was not living up to the standards set before him speaks loudly to our community. I ask you to come together and stop attacking one another. It does not serve any purpose. It divides our community, and it's a poor example for our staff and our children.
Can you start the three minutes now, please? Deborah Walling, 30 for Christopher Road. I do want to touch on some things that were just spoken about. As far as everybody being divided, this is a heated time, climate. Things are said, people are running against each other, and that is just the climate that we are in. As far as the two members not voting for the kids to be in school, it is exactly what happened. In August 13th, 2020, Monica and Rachel did vote for the kids not to be in school. So I don't know why that's misconstrued, but that is an issue. The Board meeting, Board members are supposed to be putting the kids first. I also want to ask, this question comes from another parent. She would like to know when or if the township will begin resuming the hiring of substitute teachers via ESS, since a lot of them have been fired due to the schools employing full-time subs. Also, the policies that were voted on this evening, copy of P2422, where can we get copies of those? Are they available online, or we just want to know where we can get those? Online? Okay, thank you. Whenever there's any type of secrecy, which began with the firing of the superintendent that Michelle spoke about surrounding what's going on in our schools, parents are going to question, and rightfully so. They have every right to question anything that's happening in our schools. Our kids are there to learn. We don't know what's being implemented. These curriculum changes are not being afforded to us, so there's no transparency. So that makes parents upset. I have done numerous Oprah requests, and I was referred to them as being frivolous by Ms. Van Aken. Okay, a parent's Oprah request is never frivolous. That's number one. But we're not being told what's being, what's being taught to our children. We want to know. Parents have that right. You know, so a lot of parents are up in arms about that, and we're obviously very divided. We want to know. It's our right. I mean, our kids are there, how many hours a day? My son's special needs, he cannot tell me I learned this today, or I'm exposed to this. So we want to know exactly what's happening in our schools, and there's nothing going with that. That's why I decided to run for a seat in the Board. I saw unethical things happening, and it's just the way it is. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalo, can I address the voting situation?
Sure. I wanted to be very clear, and please feel free to go check the video from the actual meeting. The meeting, because this has gotten a lot of rhetoric, a lot of discussion, I'm the person who voted. Let me tell you what I voted for. We were, we were given the reopening plan. We were asked to vote on whether it was sufficient and adequate in order to reopen our school safely. Not whether the schools were reopening, we don't vote on that. We don't vote on mask mandates, we don't vote on any of those items. We simply voted on whether or not the reopening plan was adequate as written to protect and keep our children safe. Ms. Van Aken and I both voted no because we did not think that there were adequate measures and protocols and processes in place in that plan. Please, I urge all of you to go back and look at the actual meeting, look at the hour and a half of questions that were presented related to the reopening plan and why we did not feel it was inadequate, and I hope that this will finally put this particular issue to bed. Happy to discuss any of my decisions and why I made certain decisions, but that decision in and of itself, I wanted to make sure that the record was reflected accurately. I'm not sure if you would like to address the Oprah request.
I will. Let's hear the members of the public.
Hello, everybody. I know I'm going to go over my three minutes, so I brought copies of everything I want to discuss. I'm happy to leave, made a copy for each of you, and I'll also be emailing to you tonight. My name is Eric Simkin. I live at 3 Wyndham Road, I'm a resident of Voorhees Township. I'm here because I have concerns about the upcoming Voorhees Township Board of Education elections. I've been doing my own due diligence by attending regular School Board meetings, reviewing the meeting minutes over the last 18 to 20 months, and by attending the candidate meet and greet night. And thanks to everybody who put that together, it was awesome. I have found several key issues, in my opinion, and since I won't be able to do it in three minutes, like I said, I'm going to be leaving you with this. But I have two main concerns: transparency between the Board and the citizens of Voorhees Township, and potential conflict of interest that may exist with at least one incumbent member as follows. At the meet and greet, a candidate alleged that Mrs. Watson and Ms. Van Aken voted against the school board, school learning, in-school learning mostly for most of the students in the 2021 year. Actually, you mentioned, Mrs. Watson, that it was misinformation or disinformation that was being disseminated, but I did pull up the notes, and they're here, from August 26. You brought a motion, and Mrs. Van Aken seconded the motion, and a vote on revising the reopening plan to exclude any in-person learning for most students. Both Mrs. Watson and Mrs. Van Aken did, in fact, vote against in-person learning for the majority of students. The only miss or disinformation I see there was saying that that vote never occurred. It did. Second, I found the Board website that Mrs. Van Aken works for a company in educational technology called ClassLink. And actually, when I looked at her LinkedIn profile, it has the title of Board of Education Vice President, which does appear to violate the Voorhees Township Policy 0142, Board Member Qualifications, Prohibited Acts, and Code of Ethics, as well as some other state rules. The CEO of ClassLink, Burj Ikayin, participated in an article that started by saying Burj Ikayin doesn't want to hear about going back to school as normal. As the founder and CEO of ClassLink, he has long advocated for the removal of barriers between students and impactful educational content. The way he sees it, the pandemic has created new opportunities to improve this dynamic even more. In this episode, he discusses how the education industry can take advantage. Then I saw on Facebook, Mrs. Van Aken saying, actually, to one of the other candidates, "Do the taxpayer of Voorhees know about your frivolous Oprah request costed school district $10,000 in September alone? Making school business public knowledge when the information is not available to the public is also an apparent violation of the Code of Ethics, the social media policy, and the anti-bullying policy. I just don't see how Mrs. Van Aken could continue serving the Board nor able to run for reelection, given potential conflict of interest and disclosing school business."
Time is up.
Okay, who can I leave these with?
Mrs. Watson, can I just make a comment?
Of course.
Since it was quite directed at me. Number one, whether my, the opinions of my CEO of the company that I work for are his opinions and his opinions only. I have also worked for ClassLink since May 24th of this year, so, so the back-to-school plan was, was way before that. I know that Mr. Simkin called my employer, so there are, there are no other conflicts of interest. So I just want to, you know, make it aware, clear that opinions of my CEO are his.
Julie Kedover, 9 Fairway Drive. Ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Though you likely know I'm running as a write-in candidate for a Board seat, I'm speaking now as a Voorhees resident of over 17 years and a parent of two children in our schools. Every resident should care about our schools. Their quality impacts the future success of our children, the ability to attract and keep education talent, and property values. This Board has seen unprecedented challenges and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. It is my opinion that the Board needs to focus on four things: COVID recovery, getting a comprehensive understanding of all impacts and closing the gaps, equity in education across the district, improving the caliber and reputation of our schools, and hiring a dynamic, empathetic superintendent who will lead effectively. There are also two issues looming large I'd like to address: safety and ensuring an inclusive curriculum. Safety can mean protecting students with allergies or ensuring protocols and drills relating to threats are followed. Safety also means curbing the cases of COVID by masking. Three Board candidates oppose masking and want it to be a choice, even though that choice puts everyone at risk. You can't smoke whenever you, wherever you want to because smoking risks both the health of the smoker and the health of anyone around. No one likes wearing a mask. We do it to protect ourselves and each other. At the August meeting, the Board addressed a letter from a Parents United candidate that asserted that masking is a violation of the Nuremberg Code, which was put in place after World War II to address atrocities in medical experiments conducted on people in concentration camps during the Holocaust. Thereafter, all three non-incumbent Board candidates demanded repeatedly that the Board defy the governor's mask mandate. What kind of message does this send to families, to teachers, to staff? Ironically, they're all running on a platform of fiscal responsibility, but defiance of a state executive order risks funding, which is by definition fiscally irresponsible. The second issue of concern is diversity, equity, and inclusion in education. The same candidates would also have this Board defy a law passed in New Jersey last year, requiring teaching on DEI. We should be celebrating our diversity, striving for equity in education, and teaching inclusion and tolerance. Phrases like "parent choice" may seem innocuous, but make no mistake, they are antithetical to public education. These would-be Board members reject the idea that education should give kids a well-rounded worldview and prepare them to think for themselves rather than just regurgitating their parents' beliefs. What they want is total parental control. They are not interested in partnership or collaboration with other stakeholders. That is alarming. I am a product of a superior public education that enabled me to continue success throughout my life. I want all kids here to have this quality of education. Public schools, public schools are flexible enough to meet most kids' needs. Those who want a personalized experience have other options, but I want to remind everyone that public school is for all, not just some. By all means, we should improve and focus on excellence and reputation, but infiltration and destruction of the system by those who fundamentally oppose it cannot be the way. Please pay attention.
Randy Stupler, 7 Cranberry Place. And, like I said, I'm Randy Stupler, and my main purpose tonight was to come here to really bring everybody together as a community and kind of plead to everybody in our community to really come together and put our differences aside, move on from the past, but there's nothing we could do tonight that will ever change what happened. What's behind us is behind us, and we have to focus on the future. And bringing up all these contentious comments, I don't think really helps. I think we're all here for the greater good of our children. I think there's so much negative news today about school boards. I mean, it's, it's all the way up on Capitol Hills, we saw today in the news. So I think, you know, I would love our school district to make the news for good things, not for all these negative things that are associated with school boards today. And I think the only way to do that is to really put our differences aside, come together, work together as one community, because that's what we are. We're lucky to live in this amazing community. We all, like, we can argue all day, all night about COVID protocols, CRT, anything you want, health curriculums. It's not really going to get us anywhere. We're going to keep being contentious and arguing and confrontational, and that's not going to do our children any good. So that's really just my main message. I think we all really want the best for our kids, and I think that's where we really need to focus on. You know, who said what, or who did what? We've all said things, we've all done things. I don't think we can really hold that against because we've all made mistakes, but I think our goal is really the children, and I think that needs to be our focus. And I think we need to stop coming after each other and all this negativity, because I don't think it, you know, our kids are the ones that we're here for, and I don't think that really sets any good example for them.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tari Dill. I'm at 32 Christopher Road. I'd like to thank Randy for your comments. I must say, I have to agree with that. We are here to, we're lucky to be in this community. We all, I know I am very grateful to have the teachers who are so thoughtful and engaged in our children's education. I think that is everything we are here to encourage and to promote, but to say that we are here to say that we don't agree with keeping our children safe, I think is misinformation by a certain individual who's just up here that is not. That is not what I or my co-runner is here to encourage. We are here to ensure that our children continue to get the best of our education. Our main concern is around transparency, as we talked about. And for someone, especially on the board, to be referring to a parent putting in for an Oprah request is frivolous. I think who defines what is frivolous on a Oprah request, I think, is definitely inappropriate to be discussing on social media. So I'll just put that out there and leave it at that. But at this time, no one is here to discuss not being an advocate for diversity or inclusion. Our main concern, at least for myself, is to continue to be focusing on, especially in light of COVID, and how that has impacted on our children's education, to be focusing on our basics of math, science, English, and history, including the good and the bad, and striving to encourage our children to be successful adults. The teachers that are here are not employed to be therapists. They're here to be teachers who are encouraging to teach our kids the basics of all those, those subjects, so our kids can be successful in life. I know my main concern, discussing about parental involvement to ensure that our parents are aware of going, what's going on. My concern is around our transgender policy of 5-7-5-6, where parental rights have been removed. This is not about transgenders. This is about parental knowledge of what's going on. My concern is the school district has accepted that parental consent is not required when it comes to a child changing their name or their, their gender. As a licensed mental health clinician, I must say I'm highly concerned, because according to this policy, a student need not meet any threshold diagnosis or treatment requirement to have his or her gender identity recognized and respected by the school district. In addition, legal or court order name change is not required. There is no affirmative duty for any school district staff member to notify student's parent or the student's gender identity or expression.
Time.
So my concern is obviously to ensure that parents, I understand, are in.
That means you have to, that means you are done speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But to make sure parents have a role in.
Please stop.
Thank you.
Speaking.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. My name's Cara Thornton. I'm from 37 Rollinwood. A couple of things. The first one being, I've already voiced this to Mr. Redfern, that I'm concerned about wrestling happening. I'm not really sure how it's happening when there is obviously no social distancing in any way, shape, or form able to happen. So that's just my one issue is not everyone is vaccinated yet, and you're going to have kids put together wrestling, and then that's going to possibly pass things on. Now for my second point. As someone who was raised in Voorhees, who attended Hamilton, VMS, and Eastern myself, I moved back here for my children to experience the same, especially for the exceptional diversity in this district. Few other towns are, few other towns are so vastly multicultural, multi-faceted as ours. I want my children to experience, and most importantly, learn from others who have different backgrounds, skin color, religions, and identities. Moving to an area where not, where everyone looked exactly like them was not an option for us, because that's not what our country looks like. Exposure to diversity are what lead to understanding and empathetic adults, which clearly is missing in some of this room today. Some who are fearful of everyone who does not look or act like them. This underscores just how important diversity education is, along with a board that understands diversity, to avoid the cycle of fearful ignorant adults raising fearful ignorant children. Again, this is why I'm raising my children here, and this is why it is terrifying to me, actually terrifying, that there are certain people, people under the name Parents United, involved in conspiracy-laden fake news, raising the voices in this town, in fact, some trying to get elected to the Board of Ed itself, in an attempt to silence the truth about the racism on which our country was built, to turn a blind eye to evidence and science, and to publicly, I repeat, publicly promote transphobic and homophobic views in an effort to students of this white cisgender bubble. I have screenshots from public pages in case anyone is interested to see these exact things that I just talked about. I, and I know many others in Voorhees, have zero tolerance for this. Starting now, I hope to drown out these voices with mine, mine and others who are appalled by this behavior, and let these ignorant voices know they are not welcome in this district. They will not allow to make any child feel lesser, which is exactly the trajectory they're on, to make any child who is different than them feel less. It's basically bullies that are just grown up, and it sickens me. Let's keep Parents United out to protect our children from their exclusionary and intolerant views, which will outright harm the children they are supposedly trying to protect. I urge everyone to vote for Van Aken Watson and write in Julie Kettover to ensure this district thrives. Thank you.
Anyone?
I believe I still have about 30 seconds on my timer. I really cannot believe what just happened in here. And the fact that we have a member of the public who came up and publicly called out a board member's employer location and had the audacity to call them on the phone, and that we have board members standing by, watching members of the public attack, blame, and essentially haze your colleagues, and say nothing, and allow them to bear the brunt of your collective decisions, just because you don't want them to be reelected, or because you have a personality conflict with them? Have the courage to stand behind your decisions. Have the courage to stand up and say, yes, I voted that way, and I may have a difference of opinion, but it is not okay to treat our fellow board members like that. It is really unbelievable that you essentially are not saying anything and allowing a member of the public to quasi-stalk Ms. Van Aken.
Touching on what she just spoke about, nobody is calling anybody out, first of all. Okay, that's not what this is. This is about the children. This is about the children losing an entire year last year, and they had a hybrid program. These two members voted against that. We want everything to be in the best interest of the children. So if it's not reflected in that way, we are going to speak up about that. That's not attacking anybody personally. That's not saying, oh, I hate you, you shouldn't be on. That's not what this is about. This is about the children. It's all about the children. The children, everybody has experienced such turmoil in the last year and a half, and we understand that. But the kids especially have experienced a lot of learning loss, a lot of mental depression, a lot of anxiety by not being in the classroom, which is essential and paramount to their well-being. That is why we had an issue with the two members that were the only ones that voted against that. That's an issue. We don't see that putting the best of the kids at heart, and that's the only issue here.
But the vote didn't matter even if you still went back to school.
The kids weren't shooting's week. They, they went to no school.
Ladies, come on. No debating. You want to debate, go outside.
Exactly.
Go in the hallway.
Exactly.
And I would appreciate if you would wear your mask correctly, ma'am.
Well, you know what? I haven't worn my mask.
Well, so do I, but I can wear my mask appropriately.
Mrs. Walling. I'm sorry, Mrs. Walling. And you can't wear the mask correctly. You can step outside.
I'll be right back, sorry. I guess I just wanted to, everybody keeps going back to all these things, and I think we're not going to get anywhere unless we put everything aside and come together. I mean, arguing, we can argue all day, all night, but at the end of the day, what are our kids benefiting? I mean, it's time to stop, come together, and work out our problems and help these kids emotionally. I could tell you all three of my kids suffered, and they were, I was fortunate enough to be home with them, and we live in a neighborhood with other kids. There's plenty of kids that weren't fortunate like that. But I'm, I was very lucky, and my kids still suffered. And I have the youngest, my youngest has special needs, and he's still suffered. He suffered from the pandemic. He's suffering starting middle school right now. It's been an awful time for us. But you know what? If we can't lean on our neighbors and friends, and, you know, we can all call each other out, but how do you know our kids aren't friends at school, that they sit at tables together, or have activities together? So I think, you know, we, we need to stop the bashing, stop the negativity, and move forward in a positive direction. And whatever was done is done, and let's put the past behind us. So that's all I have to say.
Any other comments? Board comments?
I have a comment. Everybody here, every parent here is passionate, very passionate about their feeling COVID, back to school, masks, vaccines. But this is not the venue or campaign. And I can tell you, as a board member that was attacked by people that are saying not to attack candidates that are running, it is very difficult to sit up here and make decisions, some which are out of our control. And I agree with the non-attacking. I don't agree with the hypocritical talk, but we are all here for the children. We all do our best. The mandates, unfortunately, are just that. We're all up here because we care about the kids. We all have jobs, we all have families. We're doing our best. Everybody has to come together. That's all I have to say.
I have something to say.
I still have.
I too have been attacked by the public and the staff in our schools. Letters were sent to my house anonymously. I would stop on Facebook and criticize for going on vacation, which has nothing to do with anyone in this room, it's my own business. So I just want people to know, like, we have our own lives too. Like, we want, you know, we do, we go to what's best for the kids, but we are people too. So you have to understand that we have our own lives too. And I think that it needs to be recognized that, I was saying with Rachel, that's, you know, her personal, that's her personal business, where she works. We don't look into details of that. So I think everybody should really recognize the fact of the good that we have done and just stop all the attacking, because it's really, I've had enough of it, to be honest with you. This is my fifth year serving on the board and will be my last year because of what has gone on in the past 18 months. That's all.
I'd like to start, I actually have three things that I'd like to convey. I'll start with the kids, because that's the most important, and that's why we're here. So I will again thank the district, all of the teachers for creating a supportive and inclusive learning environment. I very much support the DEI curriculum, and I think if we could teach more of it in our schools, all of our kids would be better. So thank you for continuing to work your best within the district to support our children. The second point is, while I do think that this has gotten to be very ugly, and I don't just mean the elections, I mean all of the meetings that have occurred here, I do not think that we can just stop and come together. I think it is completely inappropriate to call somebody's employer. I actually think Ms. Van Aken should consider a restraining order, should have, should have the police involved at this point. As, as Ms. Galliano said, we are volunteers here. We are all doing the best that we can. And I can tell you, whether the records share showed exactly what the vote indicated last year, we all had discussions about COVID many times, over the course of many sessions, over reviewing many drafts of many plans. And even though I was one who voted yes at that vote, there was not a single board member that didn't want our kids to go back to school. It was about whether or not and how they should go back to school. So I am sorry that there is a lot of confusion. I'm not going to use the words misinformation or disinformation, as that is clearly politically charged. But I do think that everyone needs to respect everyone, and we need to get back to some civility and focus on the children. Any person who wants to come here and talk about curriculum, any person who wants to come to a meeting and talk about sports, any person who has concerns about what is going on in our school district to keep our children safe, has the option of coming here to talk. It is, it is beyond the pale to talk about a board member in a way where they have, and call a board member's employer. I'm actually, I, I just cannot believe this has happened, and that is incivil. I will leave it there.
I have a couple of comments. So, so I just want to say that the, the decisions to, to wear a mask and to go back to school were absolutely the correct decisions to be made at the time. And in fact, wearing masks is still the correct decision to be made. To give you some background on my thought process, I have a couple of different jobs that I do. I'm a, I work at the University of Pennsylvania at their main hospital. I'm an anesthesiologist, I'm also an ICU doctor, and I also run our quality and safety program within the operating rooms. And one of the things that we talk about when we talk about safety in operating rooms is we always talk about something that's a never event. Never events that we have in the operating rooms are things like, you should never have a surgical instrument left on the side of you, right? Like, that's something that should never happen. You should never have an operation that happens on the wrong leg. So if you're supposed to get a right ear replacement, you should never get a left ear replacement. And the way I think about COVID protocols, the way I think about keeping our children safe, is keeping our children safe is a never, it's one of these things that's a never event. So anything that we can do to mitigate the risk of children getting sick, or staff members getting sick, is something that we should do. You know, some people say that I'm like a little bit affected by this, and I've had a number of patients who have come into my ICU and haven't made it out from COVID. Some of them have been really young too. I've had people in their, in their twenties, I've had people in their thirties, just over the past month who haven't made it out of my ICU. So this is something that I think is real, and I would hate for one of our children or one of our staff members to wind up in that situation. It's, it would be my greatest nightmare for that to happen. So I think that what we have in place has mitigated that risk as much as possible while giving our children the best education possible over this time period. The other thing that I think is really important is that, you know, public schools, they serve a number of purposes, and one of them isn't that they're, isn't to tell children what to think, but to teach them how to think. And I think that that's something that we really need to stress moving forward, and I think that the curriculum that we have set up is set up to teach them how to think. So they shouldn't just be getting information and regurgitating that from any source, whether or not it's from their parents, or from the internet, or from their teachers. What we should be teaching them how to do is how to process that information and think for themselves. And I think that our, our teachers do an incredible job of that. I had, I said, you know, Mr. Hassel is here, we're getting his 25 years of recognition, and I signed at him, and you're really talking critical thinking and writing. So, so this is, you know, again, I think that that's part of our mission and what we should be focusing on, rather than exactly what we teach is how we teach people how to think and how to process information.
Any other board comments? I will move to finance. Can I get a motion to approve all of the items under finance? Opening up the online voting. All items were unanimously approved. I'll close it and save it. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Please don't.